I think we have everyone, so we're gonna get started in about 10 seconds, 10 seconds.
All right, we will get started. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 13th City Council Work Session Meeting. I know we're in a new place, but I know we've been here many times before, so excited to see everyone. It's been, feels like we've been gone for almost six weeks, so excited to be back and doing the city's business. Good to see familiar faces and look forward to the conversation. At this time, we'll start with the Peninsula Ferry Feasibility and Market Study. I will turn it over to the City Manager. Alan, over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Member, Vice Mayor, and Members of City Council. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with a presentation from Hampton Roads Transit concerning their evaluation and study results for a new passenger ferry service between the Peninsula and Waterside in Norfolk. We welcome us, we welcome with us today Mr. William Harold, HRT President and CEO, Mr. Ray Almaruso, HRT Chief Planning and Development Officer, and Mr. Robert Lee, HRT Regional Transit System Manager. And Mr. Harold will begin the presentation this afternoon, I think, perhaps not.
Perhaps not, Mr. Manager. Good, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for having us talk about this study that we're in the process of concluding again. Ray Almaruso, Chief Planning and Development Officer. I'll be helped with Robert Lee, who's a project manager for the study, and thank you, Mr. Harold, for giving me your few minutes. So I know you were pressed for time. I'll walk through the presentation quickly and talk a little bit about the feasibility and market study that we just underwent. So, by introduction, we were asked by members of our board, a certain representative from the City Council.
Sounds like Councilman Woodbury.
Gee, why doesn't the Peninsula have ferry service similar to what's on the South Side for passengers? So, we put together some funding to explore the opportunity to look at the passenger feasibility of passenger service between the Peninsula Cities and the South Side, basically, the city of Norfolk. The study was going to do a few things. Identify what is the potential ridership, identify the needed infrastructure needs, basically, the ferry landings and the boats, give you a planning level understanding of capital costs to make that happen, what the operational requirements are in terms of the boat, it's a different body of water that it traverses in the southeastern branch of the Elizabeth River, and then the annual O and M costs, operating maintenance costs. And that's what we're gonna go over today. So, just as a primer for past studies, there's been many looking at service between the Peninsula and the South Side. The latest one, for those who've been around Longanough, may have remembered that Senator Frank Wagner, when he was in the General Assembly, had obtained some funding through the General Assembly to look at the feasibility of passenger ferry service using fast ferries. Back in 2013, the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation ran with that study, but it kind of got set aside saying, "We need to wait and see what the city of Norfolk is doing with the future of light rail and where we would want to connect that service." Before that, there was a HRT Waterborne Transit Concept Study back in 2010, and before that, something very early on in 2004, that we looked at passenger ferry service. There was a HarborLink Passenger Ferry Service that ran briefly back in 1999 to 2002, and you could see that information there. That was discontinued for low ridership, it was operated under the auspices of HRT at the time, but was contracted out. So how do you go about looking at what is the opportunity for passenger ferry service? These boxes represent the areas that we ask certain questions and look for the data to support it. First and foremost, does the Peninsula Cities, and that's Hampton and Newport News, have the job and population densities, I'll call it, to support passenger ferry service and utilization of that ferry service? And if so, where are they within those two very big cities? Is there propensity for people to use it as an option for the single-occupant vehicle? That's what's called commuter propensity. The prevalence of people who are employed, because most of our people that use transit use to go back and forth to work. Over 67% of people who use transit do it for that very reason. And if so, where are they going? The travel flow data, what are the times of the day that people might use transit service? What are the peak travel times? And then, part of the investigation included interviewing what we call stakeholders from both cities and doing actual site visits to ascertain the conditions of potential ferry landing sites. I'm gonna ask Mr. Lee to come up at this point, who's gonna walk through some of the technical information, and then I'll come back up to talk about the dollars and cents.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, thank you. Again, thank you for hosting us. In order for the service to be viable and optimal, we looked at how much ridership it took per peak period in order... So, how many passengers would we have a peak period in the morning? That would be a 6 to 9, in the evening, that would be a 3 to 6, in order for a service to actually work. Looking at other agencies that are of similar size, we came up with the magic number of 150 is optimal. So, looking at that, the numbers, we see that South Side to Newport News in the AM, and you'll see 23rd Street, 28th Street here, because those are two landings that we, that we'll talk about here in a minute, that are opportunities for ferry landing in the city of Newport News. You'd have 235 for 28th Street for the AM peak, and then 155 for the 23rd Street. And then, in the evening, Newport News to South Side, you'd have 220 from 28th Street, and 150, which is right at the threshold for 23rd Street. We didn't do this in a vacuum, we did talk to planning members from the city of Newport News, Sheila McAllister and Angela Hopkins. We did look at the Newport News Downtown Vision Plan when we were putting this together, to look at what are the site potentials. We came out, we looked at three sites within the city of Newport News. We looked at the Small Boat Harbor, 23rd Street and 28th Street. Small Boat Harbor was kind of ruled out, which we'll talk about in a minute. But we got input from the city, and then the city of Hampton, when we went to the city of Hampton to look at their side and to look at their opportunities over there. We talked to the Coast Guard, and then more importantly, the Army Corps of Engineers, because for the 28th Street landing, that would be a critical piece for that opportunity over there. And of course, some consultants on the engineering side, when we start looking at infrastructure needs. Site business, as I said, we looked at three sites over here, 23rd Street, 28th Street, and Small Boat Harbor. Small Boat Harbor was ruled out because of, there's very little potential for destinations in that area at the, at the current time, or even long-term planning. It's primarily residential, you do have the seafood market coming in, but then you also have difficulty navigating because it's all no wake throughout the channel. So that increases the transit time that it would take to get from one side to the other, therefore making it a longer trip and really not a feasible trip. 23rd Street, 28th Street, again, for Newport News. 28th Street is again identified within the Newport News Downtown Vision Plan, and then you see the Hampton sites located there, that's a whole nother discussion. So for 23rd Street, the pros are, this is a good near-term opportunity because most of, most of the infrastructure for dock is there. We would have to install some ADA components, obviously ticket, you gotta have some parking, which is readily available there. And you do have development actively taking place down in that end of the city. We are close to transit there, we would run transit to that point in order, and extend it so that the people can get from there to the Newport News Transit Center, which is highlighted in the circle. The cons are, obviously, that, you know, it's not the long-term vision. It's also not as close to the shipyard, which is an opportunity for passengers, a huge opportunity for passengers between Norfolk and Newport News. So, that's a little bit of a drawback for it. 28th Street, as you see here, is, again, and we'll see it in a minute, laid out in the Newport News Downtown Vision Plan. Pros, it's close to the yard, it's close to transit already, it's already in place, and it does have some opportunity with the planning that's already scheduled to take place in that area. The cons are, there's a lot of construction that would have to take place. So there is no dock, there's no pier, you'd have to do some dredging in order to make something viable for a 65-foot vessel to unload and offload passengers there. The other piece to that is, there's no parking, because as everyone knows, this is primarily residential. So there is no parking for anybody that may come from the center or the top of the city down to take the ferry over. This is an illustration right from your Newport News Downtown Vision Plan, and in the, on the right side there is the actual layout of the proposed route you have within that plan. The only difference in the route that we have in the, in the survey, in the study itself, is we're not going to Portsmouth, which is actually identified within your plan there. So it would be just straight to Norfolk, and then back. It's a 60-minute travel time, with 10 minutes of that being dwell time in the, at the pier, unloading and off, onboarding. We'd look at a 30 not travel time, travel speed between the two, which you're gonna have no wake zones on both sides, or low wake zones. Most of the Elizabeth River is a low wake zone. So if you look at the maximum speed, 30, 30 knots in the middle there, your travel time is 19 minutes. And then, with the Elizabeth River, you're down to five knots as a max speed, and your travel time is 24 minutes. Coming into Newport News, right around the bend, it's gonna be a five-minute travel time. This is what we currently use for ferry service between Norfolk and Portsmouth. This is not an open-water vessel. The characteristics, as far as length and beam and draft, are very similar as to what we would need for a vessel to be operating service between here and Newport News, up to including the capacity. We talked about 150 passenger peak load. Any of the vessels we looked at would have a minimum of that. This is what you're looking at, having to possibly purchase as far as a vessel to operate. Catamaran style is going to be the one you need in order to operate within the open waters and the weather conditions you're gonna have throughout the harbor. They all do have the passenger load, and they have the speed at which you need. Now, again, it's similar to the ferry that we currently operate, in the fact that it's a six-foot draft, which is important when you start looking at your 28th Street location, because you do not have that. You do have it at 23rd Street currently. Operating scenarios, we looked at two operating scenarios. The first one being 260 days, that's primarily your weekdays, including your holidays within those weekdays. And then the second one is 355 days, that's through Saturday, eight hours a day, and then Sunday would be a nine-hour day. And those are the annual hours, and then the potential operating costs at the bottom for each scenario. That's just the operating cost, you're looking at vessel maintenance and staff.
Can I ask a quick question? That operating cost is just from Newport News, or is that inclusive of surrounding?
It's, we'll talk about the cost allocation agreement, how you share O and M costs in a moment. So, in addition to operating costs, there's also capital costs, which is the purchasing of the boats, the reconstruction of the docks, or the construction of the missing dock, retrofitting to have a second landing over at Waterside and Norfolk Side, and permitting and everything else. So these are planning-level costs expressing our assumption that revenue service will begin in 2031. And you can see, we broke it down between Newport News improvements at the docks, and then what has to happen at Waterside to be able to accommodate a second boat. But all in, expressed in, inflated in $20, $30, we're looking at a range, and because it's a planning study, nothing's engineering yet, of between $17 million and $25 million, which includes, the bulk of that is the purchase of three vehicles. In order to run that service with the turnaround time of one hour, you need two boats and a spare, basically, that are complying with Coast Guard requirements. The cost allocation agreement, that is set up in HRT, just like you fund bus service and on the South Side Cities, bus and ferry and light rail. It dictate, dictates how you share in the benefits of federal and state operating assistance, fare box revenue, and then what remains is picked up by each of the localities. In this case, because it's a proposed operation that two cities would benefit from, maybe a third if the city of Hampton wants to participate as well, but we'll, since I'm here at Newport News today, we'll talk about a 50-50 split. The revenue hours would be the same for both cities, so that annual operating costs, you can divide in half, and that would be your share of the costs annually, on top of what you already fund. The city of Newport News funds about $8 million of bus service, after all the federal and state operating assistance is applied, so that would be on top of that by 2031. Are the capital costs, HRT, it's different when it comes to capital costs for construction. We pursue grants of all types, and this current administration has made a lot of grant money available to buy passenger ferries, as well as to rehabilitate or build passenger ferry docks. We would choose every avenue that we can to look at discretionary and traditional funding for these type of services. We would also have to embed it within our 10-year capital improvement plan. There is no discussion right now in the version that we have about passenger ferry service. We would do that if this council, and Norfolk Council, and City Council of Hampton want to see us move forward with this. So the next steps is, the final report will be concluded in the end of this month. We'll share that with your staff and with members of council. We are going to brief at a work session in the city of Norfolk, as well as the city of Hampton, the same type of information. Depending on the level of interest, I assume you'll express that through your City Manager in a letter to Mr. Harold. We'd like to move forward to the next stage. That would be providing more detailed engineering cost estimates and starting to talk about what, what it would take to actually rehabilitate beyond planning level, understanding those costs. Of course, we would seek aggressively any money for capital investments, since HRT doesn't have a defined capital budget like the cities have. We depend very heavily on federal and state grants. So, with that, I'm happy to take questions and go back to any map that you'd like to see.
At this time, is there any questions from City Council? Just being, being mindful of the time that we have to do in closed session.
Yes, currently, as far as the people who operate the ferries, is there a problem with getting people to work? Because, you know, the whole United States has been suffering from that since COVID. How, how has that played into the annual operating cost? And how, how that would make a difference in, you know, people having consistent ridership?
Sure, that's a good question. You should know that unlike our bus system, which we operate directly through our bus operators, we contract out this service with a, between Portsmouth and Norfolk with a company called Norfolk by Boat. So it's fully contracted, they provide the captains, we provide the vessels, they're vessels owned by HRT. They provide the deckhands and the captains and run the service. It's labeled and branded HRT, but they're running the service on our behalf. That's what we would anticipate with this, we would contract it out with a company to run it for us.
Is there any further questions at this time? I think we're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for the opportunity to present to council.
Mr. Manager, I believe we have the CDFI discussion next.
Yes, sir, the second item on your evening agenda is a resolution authorizing a donation of $200,000 to the Greater Peninsula Cares Foundation Incorporated to assist with the initial development and administrative costs to establish a business loan fund to support Peninsula businesses. Brian Wolford of Swan Creek Strategies is working with the Greater Peninsula Cares Foundation to help establish the business loan fund. Brian is here tonight, along with Bishop Dwight Riddick, Chair of the Greater Peninsula Cares Foundation, to provide council with more information on this important project and resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Members of the council, along with City Manager and others. I'm Pastor Dwight Riddick, Chair of the Peninsula Cares Foundation. Appreciate the opportunity to present our CDFI proposal to the council. The Greater Peninsula Cares has achieved great things through partnerships and collaboration. This proposal represents an evolution of our programming, but it also reflects consistency with our focus on community empowerment. The idea to pursue CDFI investment funding was initiated and suggested to us by Senator Mark Warner. Senator Warner, a longtime champion of the CDFI program, asked our organization to consider establishing a CDFI. We've spent approximately a year reviewing the program, the feasibility of our organization creating a CDFI project. This proposal represents our next steps and the support we need from the city of Newport News. The city of Hampton has already provided $200,000 in launch funding to the project. Our attorney consultant, Brian Wolford, will provide the project details.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity to address the council. It's been some time since I last addressed the council. It was, in fact, when Mayor Ratley was mayor, to give you an idea, when I was on the Mayor's Youth Commission as a child. This project, Community Development Financial Institution Project, is a project to leverage a federal program that has been out for some time, but we haven't, as a community, always taken advantage of it. And what the project, what, what the program does is it provides funding, in essence, from both institutional investors and backing from the federal government to raise funds that invest in underserved areas, areas that haven't seen capital investment, that have business loan needs that are unmet. And unfortunately, or unfortunately, there are a number of those areas in Newport News and Hampton, which we seek to leverage funding to help finance and spur small business development. I'm trying to get to a slide on the map, it should be in your presentation. But the, the map shows a analysis from the Department of Treasury site on which census tracts in Hampton and Newport News are eligible for CDFI funding. And it's a significant amount of tracts in the city that can take advantage of this, of this funding. The goal is to, again, we're in a formation stage, this, this fund has not been, been, been formed yet, and because it's a, it's an investment fund, it requires that you go through, it requires you go through certain processes. It requires you go through certain processes to establish a fund before you raise investment for the fund. We'll raise investment funds from institutional investors, foundations, banking institutions, financial institutions are the most likely supporters of the fund. And then what we'll do, once we've gone through this formation process, we'll develop profiles of, of the types of small businesses that we're looking to support, to participate in the fund, and to, to, to receive investment. Ideally, we'll work closely with the economic development agencies of both Hampton and Newport News, leverage the research and capacity that you have in those offices and ideas with regard to where funding should be directed. But that process will be collaborative, and it will be a pretty intense process, because we want to get up and running as soon as possible. We want to raise the capital that we need for this fund as soon as possible. Our floor limit for what we look to raise for this fund is $15 million. Again, that's the floor, and we're gonna try to go exceed that. But the idea is that there are significant, you know, numbers of, of businesses that could take advantage of this type of funding, and in part, we're not just raising a fund that will sit there and, and not be utilized, but the goal of this operation of Greater Peninsula Cares is to also provide significant business assistance, because there are obviously entrepreneurs out there that have the ideas and, and, but may lack the wherewithal in some areas. It may be in finance, internal finance capacity, or legal capacity, or marketing capacity. But we need to provide that organizational support to, to fill that gap, to get them to the point of being fund-ready and, and able to take advantage of the fund too. So this isn't intended to be a fund that just sits there and looks pretty for some years, but a fund that actually operates and moves the dial. Our request is for $200,000 to match the contribution from the city of Hampton, and, and that fund, that launch budget is, will get us through the, the stage of formation, hiring the securities lawyers, doing the filing. the securities lawyers, doing the filings in the multiple states where we'll solicit fund contributions, organizing the board and the organizational capacity to be able to get a fund up and running. I know we're pressed for time. I wanted to yield to questions with regard to the fund.
Do we have any questions at this time from city council?
I do.
Yeah, we'll go Councilman Berry, then Councilman Long.
Where are you located now? Where are you running this program now?
There's no location. Greater Peninsula Cares is located in the peninsula, Newport News.
But you have no area that you have already done this program before?
Greater Peninsula Cares is a new organization. It's only been around for a year.
Okay. But you don't have any kind of track record or any kind of record to show us?
The team that's being assembled includes the securities lawyer, Mark Minor, is with Thomas Heine. That's one of the prominent experts in the country on this. We've also consulted the former treasury director that ran the program, who will also be continuing to advise on the project. And Carmen Perkins is the investment banker who's been involved in CDFI projects and an investment banker in Goldman Sachs and Durham Capital on the project. So the team that we've assembled has experienced, significant experience on CDFI.
Councilman Long.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this program forward to the council. My question is really on the implementation of the CDFI. At the time, when the entrepreneurs are selected to be awarded these funds, will they be paired up with CEOs of other companies that are successful so that way they can ensure success in their business?
Yes, there will be layers of that type of support. So what we envision will be, there will be coaching. There will be intensive directed coaching from the organization, but also submit our protege relationships. The networks are going to be key. This isn't just intended to be a loan fund where you get a loan from a bank and the bank doesn't have any skin in the game on whether you grow and get to your next levels. But having that planning and having that support and having that, you know, even client development support and mentorship and networking is key. A win for us is not just funding some businesses, but seeing those businesses grow and kind of graduate from what we're providing to the next levels of funding.
So like AA program? HUD used to have a program?
Well, AA but with beyond graduation because AA usually has a cliff that we worry about. But something that grows them and, you know, to the point where they can get funding and be considered growth businesses that can then turn around and mentor others, very close to that.
Do we have any other comments from council at this time? If not, I'll wrap up. So I'm the council sponsor for this going forward. I think this is a great idea, and I think access to capital is the most important thing. If you look at businesses, like the hardest thing to do is to get that capital. So I will be supporting it to match the funds from Hampton tonight. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the city scorecard.
The third item on your agenda, the city scorecard, is something we've been working diligently over the past year to develop. And I'm proud to say that our dedicated innovation team has put in tremendous effort to bring us to this point. The scorecard is more than just a set of metrics. It is a strategic management system that will help us monitor and measure our progress towards achieving key city outcomes. These outcomes, which we have carefully identified, are designed to reflect the priorities and needs of our community. I want to thank everyone involved in this project for their hard work and dedication. I believe the scorecard will be a vital tool in helping us achieve our vision for Newport News, and I look forward to your feedback and support as we move forward with this important initiative. To begin the presentation, I will turn it over to Owen Miller, who is our... Where's Owen? Oh, there he is. Who is our...
He's here somewhere.
Our chief strategy officer, Owen.
So great, Mr. Manager. So while we work on getting the presentation up and running, I've got a couple of things quickly to say before I turn it over to my colleague, Marlon. If council will recall, last summer, it was actually June, we had a retreat. One of the number of things that came out of that retreat, council charged staff with figuring out a way to better track our progress towards our strategic goals in our strategic plan. Some of the other things that were tasked as part of that was to figure out a mechanism or a tool which could also provide greater transparency, accountability, and help us make better data-driven decisions.
We'll get there.
As part of that, I'd like Marlon MacDowell from our innovation office to come up, share an update about where we are with the city's scorecard.
Y'all got the slides in front of you.
Call the innovation office.
Yeah. So, thank you, Owen. And I also want to express my sincere support to all of our department heads and their teams in supporting us through this effort in building out this transparency and strategic alignment tool. And also a particular shout-out to Jeff Albright, a member of our innovation office and analyst here that has been really the gas behind the development of the scorecard as well. So before we jump into the details of what the scorecard looks like and feels like, I wanted to talk a little bit about the structure to orient you quickly to what you might expect of the data that you'll continuously receive over the next couple of quarters. So, scorecard, we looked at some of the key players in this space, the Austons, the Bostons, the Fort Collins, the New York Cities, as we developed this approach. And there were really two main themes that stood out to us as we architected this scorecard, your scorecard. One was create good metrics that align well to the strategic plan. And Owen mentioned the plan that you all reaffirmed not too long ago. And the second point was steward the data in a way that is conducive to productive use of the scorecard. So the first key element around that alignment to the strategic plan is illustrated here in this diagram. Starting at the very top, at the foundation, is the strategic plan that we work off of, the strategic priority areas, which are people, places, government, the city goals, which there are seven. I'm not going to name them all for you, although I probably have them committed to memory at this point. And then new, with the advent of this scorecard, your scorecard, are KPIs and supporting activities, KPIs being key performance indicators. And with our key performance indicators, these are quantitative measures of success. These are outcomes that city leadership and concert over several meetings and discussions and a lot of homework have defined and architected to get us to this point. Subsequent to the key performance indicators are our supporting activities. So, key performance indicators, generally lagging in nature, they show us what is after the fact. The supporting activities are what gets us to those outcomes. And our supporting activities are broken down into two domains in the architecture, programs and projects. Programs being ongoing services that city leaders and their teams deliver to the community, and projects being one-time, generally finite efforts with a defined start date and a planned completion date. We measure those two things in the scorecard differently, and at the end of the day, all are aligned to the seven goals and priority areas within that strategic plan. So that said, that was the first point, ensuring that there's constant alignment with strategic priorities. The second point is stewarding the data and creating a positive culture around how we use these insights, these new powerful insights. And these were some best practices that we felt were important to share, that we learned from these organizations that have built their scorecards to last, to last decades. So some of these, I'm not going to read them all to you. They're here handy on the slide. But focusing on progress and not perfection, providing constructive feedback, recognizing achievements, that's an important point. We have this transparency tool now, and I think it's a quick snapshot, a window into what's working and where we're achieving those goals that we set across the city. And then lastly, offering support and resources. You all sit in unique places in the sense that you can provide policy direction, you can make decisions on financial allocations. I think you all serve a key role in being able to offer support and resources to helping the city achieve the outcomes that we've defined through those KPIs. So those are the two key points. And now I'm going to get into the data quickly. And I had to channel my inner Lisa Cipriano here to figure out how I communicate all this data to y'all in ways that don't make your eyes glaze over. But before I jump into a couple of our aggregations and visualizations, what I want to remind you is that in your packet, in addition to this presentation, you have two pieces of supplementary information. The first piece of supplementary information are all 49 of the KPIs and how they've trended generally over time and where we're currently at as of August 2nd, I think, is when these reports were run. So if you're looking at progress between last week and this week, we didn't capture that in the scorecard quite yet. It's not that real time. And then the second piece of supplementary information is your, essentially your encyclopedia of each individual project that the city is running and how it aligns back to one or multiple of the 49 KPIs. So if you are interested as a council member to say, hey, what are we doing to improve access to green space? You can then refer to that in your council packet, see the litany of projects that are being run to make that assessment of how things are going. So, getting into the data, a couple of quick aggregations that I want to bring to your attention. This first one, excuse me, this first one is an aggregation of our 49 KPIs and where they currently stand in terms of how they fit into our target thresholds. Target thresholds, generally color-based, green, yellow, red, blue. So what you see here is that set of 49 KPIs aggregated in this visualization for you. Now, the ones that you see in blue are pending information. You might be asking, well, when are we going to get that information? Some of the KPIs, we source data from third-party sources, like the federal government, for example, and you should expect to see movement in that from quarter to quarter, just based on the timing of when we deliver these presentations. Others, we don't necessarily have the processes in place to collect and aggregate the data for, which is an ongoing discussion around how we build processes to collect data for those KPIs. But 15 of those out of those 24 are some that are just because of timing. We don't have the information readily available. Lastly, the ones that you see, caution, below target. What I would refer you to as far as the conversation goes are the project by KPI summary to see how the heat is being turned up on those KPIs that might be trending behind the targets. So that said, we talked about that aggregation of the 49 KPIs and how they mapped to their status indicators. What this is, just an illustrative example of what you might see, of what you will see in your council packet as you take a look at each of the 49 KPIs. Each KPI has its own unique visualization, its chart that represents what the current data point is and how it's aligned back to the green, yellow, red status indicator. Lastly, this is a different viewpoint for the city scorecard. This is an aggregation of citywide projects by goal area. So this is not necessarily a direct alignment to the KPIs. What this is looking at is across the, Jeff, 200 and some odd projects we have in this report, how they align back to each of the seven goals in the strategic plan. Now, in your packet, you will be able to see those linkages to direct KPIs. And I think just one thing to highlight, since, you know, you've got the innovation office here, is that quality of government and innovation goal, there's clearly a lot of heat, not saying this is us, this is clearly the work of the departments. There's clearly a lot of heat going on in that goal and emphasis and effort going on there. So a positive note to take from the data we're currently aggregating within the scorecard. So that said, my goal here is to make the insights that you see in your packet right now, the worst insights you're going to get from the scorecard moving forward. Our goal is to make this better, refine, make it more useful. To do so, I'm not going to give you a history about where we've been. We've been working on it. Moving forward though, our next steps are to operationalize this across city leadership in a variety of shared leadership networks, as well as start to build in for transparency purposes, insights around project status, how are individual projects doing relative to target goals, whether they're timelines or other matters. Programs, we intend to fold in programs into future reports, those ongoing services. And then lastly, a connection to the finances of the city is something we will incorporate, work to incorporate with our budget office into the scorecard so that you can see across KPIs how the dollars invested also map back to the outcomes that we're driving towards collectively. So that said, I think that's it for my presentation. I'll turn it over to y'all if y'all have any specific questions.
Questions at this time?
Questions for the floor.
Yep.
Just want to commend everyone that undertook this initiative. Mr. Manager, Marlon, you and your office, and Owen, this is extremely important. If you think, whether it's public or private, having this established is extremely important to making sure we are hitting our goals and making sure we're being as efficient as possible. So as we move towards being data-informed and not data-driven, I am excited about where we're going with this. So I just commend everyone that had a hand in this, and I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Any other comments from city council? I think we're good. Thanks, Marlon.
Thank you.
I think next, we have comments, ideas, suggestions, and we'll get this out of the way before closed meeting. I'll start all the way to the left so that Marcel...
I don't have anything, Mayor.
I do have something that I want to touch on, but bring more data to the next meeting. Along the Jefferson Avenue corridor and also on Huntington Avenue, I mentioned this some months before, that the way the trees are being planted, they're growing up, and even in this new thing, as we're redoing Ridley, and they're growing up. You know, they started small, but they're growing up and they're covering the signs of the businesses. And I've mentioned that before, and also some of the other ones that are larger, even for our Jefferson Brooksville with the Ella Fitzgerald picture on the side, those have gotten larger over the years, and that's covering the name of the building. And so, and it was the same thing on Huntington. I have some pictures in my phone. I'll be more prepared, Mr. Mayor and council, to maybe have a spread out, a spreadsheet so that we can see it because I think we're wasting, we're spending money and wasting it putting those trees there because eventually they won't, I'm sorry, eventually we won't need them because we're going to have to tear them down because they're covering the buildings that we're renovating and everything. So I really want to seriously see us take a look at that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Bye.
Nothing.
Yeah, I just want to just update council. I got a chance to meet with the VM Consulting, which is on the regional home study. Talking to them, it looks like in six-month timeframe, the study we completed, the things they're looking at is the level of service compared to the demands that is placed on these different service providers, and look for gaps, and then provide us some sustainable innovative solutions for, on preventing homelessness of, for occurring. So I'm looking forward to it, but I wanted to at least give y'all an update that I did get a chance to talk to the consultant. And this is for the regional study, which is inclusive of Hampton, Newport News, James City County, Williamsburg, and York County. So more to come about that regional home study.
Homelessness in all of those areas?
That's correct. This is a regional study for those areas.
Councilman Long, can you speak on Mayor Karen Bass's, the phone call you're on?
Yeah, that was a really good meeting. I participated on a phone call for mayors across the country, and I know the redevelopment housing and that Blue Human Services also participated on the call. And this was mainly focused on Section 8 vouchers. looking at innovative solutions for providing some incentives for landlords to increase the, the number of, of units in, in the city, which I think is going to be really important when we start addressing the homelessness issue because we need those, you need more Section Eight housing to be made available once a person comes to the shelter, then moves to the next permanent supportive housing, then off to Section Eight. So it was a really good presentation that was, that was provided to myself and others who was on the call. And I think I appreciate getting that information over to me and look forward to more conversations with mayors.
And thank you. I couldn't make the meeting, so thank you for being on that meeting. Councilman Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This weekend, me and Councilwoman Tina Vick had the opportunity to attend Catch More Kids Back to School Event. Probably about twelve-hundred people and the park was packed. It was probably the most people I've ever seen at King Lincoln Park in a very long time. Our last council meeting, Chanel Catchmore came and asked could city council help offset funds with the event they did? She requested five thousand dollars from our contingency fund. At that event, they gave out three-hundred-and-fifty book bags, they had vendors, free food, hairstyles, haircuts, and Walmart came and dropped off a truckload of stuff with microwaves, pans, you name it, was in that truck. Some asked the council for five thousand dollars out of our contingency fund for Catch More Kids Foundation.
If we have the right paperwork, I'll support it, but I want the paperwork before.
Is this the right paperwork? It's right here?
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Yeah, I, I support it too.
Okay.
I'll sign it. I think we have it. We'll sign it for you after this, John.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, you got anything before I?
No, sir.
Okay. I have seven things, but they'll be quick, I promise. They're, they're, they're one-offs. So one, from HR, from Allison, can we just get a status of the MEI? I know you've been working on it, just, just someone send a memo of something for that one. Same for chief and that gun data, I know you've been working on it, but if you could just close the loop on the gun data. Owen, two things. One, thank you for, for those who don't know, there's been a push, I think with, I think it's a mixture of Jennifer Privet and Owen, who else, Jerry, we're, we're really trying to go, let me rephrase, we're going all in on this two billion dollars for the environmental justice. And so on Monday, it was sort of a lock-in, right? It was all the community partners, the universities, Uganda, Empower All, all the nonprofits, really going after this Track One grant from the EPA. And so there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. Owen, fingers crossed, and good news for that, that Track One grant. And that's going to be able to, as we look at coal dust and ways to mitigate it, we can't do it on our own. We're going to need the federal government. So fingers crossed on that, but I appreciate the hard work on that, Owen and team. And then Owen, just as a reminder, the Hispanic month, next month, I know we're working on it, but just some feedback on that would be appreciated. Three more. Alan, can we do a meeting with you, me and comms for State of the City? It's, it's that time again, so let's, let's get started on that. And then the, the State of the City is going to be in January, or spring of next year. Yeah, spring of next year. And then the last one is, can someone just send me, I think, Michelle, can you send me the parking minimums PowerPoint that was made? I know we had that discussion, but can you just send it as a reminder? So ideally, I want to tie whatever we change for parking minimums is the same day as the ADUs. But if it's too much, that's fine, but someone send me that PowerPoint, that'd be helpful. Those are the six or seven things that I have. Anything that we missed? All right, I think we're going to go into closed session, Councilman Long.
I move that pursuant to Section 2.2, Tag 3711 Alpha of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty is amended, subsection five, the council hold a closed meeting for the purpose of discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, the subject of which is prospective business in the central section of the city.
Second.
Move to second, if please, call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you all. John.
Check one two, one two. Check one two, one two, one two. Check one two, one two, one two. Check one two, one two, one two. One two, one two. One two. Check. Okay. We'll see what you got back there. Yeah, that's too much. Just put it where you would do like during that last meeting. Okay, is that where you were? Alright. I'll talk when you get around the corner. Check one two, one two. Check one two. Test one two, one two. Check. One two, one two, one two. One two, one two, one two, one two. Check. One two. Check. Check one two, one two, one two. Check one two. Check one two. Check. One two, one two. One two, one two. Check. One two. One two. Is that...are you getting anything?
You did it. You did it. I think my... A lot of these. But... It's just... But... You... I'm... It's... But I'm right.
One two, one two, one two. One two, one two, one two.
All right, let's get us out of closed session.
All right, I move that members of council certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting by the council.
Second.
Move to second, if please call the roll.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Witt.
Four.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, stand adjourned.